I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Penny Colerole?
Trustee Guyer. Trustee Spurling.
We didn't hear you.
Here, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Betzinger.
All right, we're all here this evening. All right. Under public participation, public comment, two-minute opportunity for any member of the public to address the board on any topic. Why don't you come down to the podium if you could just state your name and address. You can sign in after you talk, but yeah, right there.
Joyce Kohler, 99 Red Fox Run, Montgomery. My husband and I have come tonight-
Can you, real quick, can you speak into that microphone because we do have people on virtually as well? Thank you.
Okay. My husband and I have come tonight to voice our concerns over the current permit restrictions regarding fences. We've lived in the Seasons Ridge subdivision for 31 years. Our house is on the Red Fox Run cul-de-sac. Our backyard butts up to the park district's walking path which runs along Route 30. Therefore, we have no neighbors at the back of our yard. We currently have a cedar wood fence that is six foot high along the back, five feet high in the sides, and four feet high in the front. We now need to replace this fence. When I went to the village hall to obtain a fence permit, I was told that the maximum height of our fence could be no more than five feet. When I was at the village hall, I was told by an employee that the fence standards were going to be reviewed this month and that we could attend this meeting to voice our concerns. Because of the slope of our backyard, even with our current six-foot fence, I can see the heads of people walking along the path, so I'm sure that they can see me too when I'm on my patio. My neighbors on both sides of our house also have six-foot-high fences along the back of their yards. I have a copy of the fence standards that were posted online, June 26, 2018. This zoning ordinance says that side and rear yards could be six feet tall or eight feet tall if not adjacent to residential. We would like to see the zoning ordinance changed back to those rules which were posted in 2018. In the event that the fence standards are not to be revised to allow for a fence taller than five feet along the back of a yard, please advise us as to how we can request variance for our backyard. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And...
So is this the proper place for us to voice this?
Yes, that was perfect. Thank you. Do you have an update?
Could you explain the rationale for changing the fence height?
Could you come up to the mic, please, so everyone can hear? And could you sign in, please? Thank you.
Have an answer to, explain to us why the fence height has been changed since just 2018, what the rationale was?
Yeah, so it's not a discussion, but yes, since we do have answers tonight, we can. Sonia or Jeff, do you want to go into that?
I can take it. So we did a massive, basically a comprehensive zoning update that kind of started in 2018 and kind of got adopted finally here just this past spring. As part of that, fence height was something that was discussed since we have several neighborhoods on the west end of town that have annexation agreements that will be expiring, and that's where a four-foot height was allowed. It was thought that five feet was kind of a soft landing for fences to not have a huge impact on those neighborhoods when their annexation agreements would no longer govern the height of fences rather than six feet. So that's what ultimately was adopted. We have since obviously gotten some pushback on that and a number of people that want to be able to replace their six-foot fences, so we have started reviewing that. There will actually be a public hearing the first Thursday in October on the text amendment that would allow a six-foot fence along, around a rear yard. So that is something that we're looking at, and once they make their recommendation, it'll come to the village board for them to adopt that ordinance. At this point, it seems like everybody is on board with the six-foot fence, so, you know, the board has reviewed the text amendment and forwarded to the plan commission to have a public hearing with that six-foot fence allowance around the rear yards. So after it gets adopted in October, we would be able to start issuing permits for six-foot fences again.
There's no way to get around that because our fence is scheduled to be placed in October.
I'm afraid before the board approves it, I cannot issue. I don't have the authority to issue a permit, and it would take longer at this point for you to go through the variance process than to just wait for this text amendment to go through.
So you're thinking that the public hearing will be on October 4th?
October 4th, and then the following Monday. It should be on the village, I think it'll be the following Monday. It'll be on the village board agenda for adoption. So after that, then we would be able to start issuing permits for the six-foot fences again.
And Joyce? Go ahead.
How do we find out where and what time that public hearing would be?
You can call our offices, but it'll also be posted on the website, but our meetings start at 7:00 PM for the Planning and Zoning Commission, so it'll be on that October 4th at 7:00 PM in the same room.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
October 7th?
11th. Oh, sorry.
First Thursday? First Thursday?
First Thursday.
So October 7th will be the Plan Commission Public Hearing.
October 7th, okay.
October 7th, and then it would come to the board on the 11th. So as long as you push your guy past that, past October 11th, assuming the board approves it that night. All right, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. I'll read the consent items, then entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting of August 23rd, 2021. Building report for August of 2021. Accounts receivable report for August of 2021. Water production report for August of 2021. The refuse report for July of 2021. Accounts payable through September 9th, 2021. And then proclamation for Constitution Week, and then a proclamation for Preparedness Month. So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
I think she dropped.
Okay, and Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
And that carries 5-0. Just for the board's input, the governor's executive order for attending open meetings remotely expired at the end of August, so she was unable to vote this evening and I think dropped the call, so she'll watch the replay. All right, item six, items for separate action this evening. The first one is a recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, 2021-011, variance from our zoning code for parking standards. This is for Aldi. And then the second enacting ordinance, 1927, is also related, but that's first reading. Director App.
Thank you. So Aldi located over at 2015 Mayfair is looking for a variance to increase their parking on the site. They are planning to reconfigure the parking lot. The footprint will stay the same, the access points are all staying the same. However, the reconfiguration is going to result in an increase of parking. With the adoption of the UDO, we now have a maximum on parking, and so the change, the increase in parking is going to put that over their maximum, although their current parking is non-conforming as well to the new ordinance because it already exceeds the maximum allowed parking of 64 spaces out there. So they are requesting the relief to be able to make these changes, kind of improve safety and traffic flow on there as well as pedestrian crossings, just to make the parking lot flow a little better. And they are in process of updating the interior as well, so this will be happening, kind of piggybacking with that work out on the site.
Thank you. Questions?
Oh, Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Hearing none, is there a motion on the recommendation? So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? This is for item A. Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman. Thank you.
And that carries 5-0. If there's no objection, I'll check with Trustee Spurling. We'll put the ordinance 1927 on consent for the next meeting, or a future meeting. All right, thank you. Item C this evening, approval of an intergovernmental master agreement with IDOT for traffic signal maintenance. This is run from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th of 2031. Mark?
Thank you, President Brawley. So this master agreement is basically dictating the ownership and electricity usage for the signals that are within the Village of Montgomery that correspond with IDOT. Again, this is kind of a housekeeping item. It's a little bit late coming to the board with the IDOT officials still working remotely, but again, as you stated, this will take us through June of 2031 for this agreement. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion? There you go.
Second.
I'll roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
And Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
That carries 5-0, thank you. All right, item D for separate action is a resolution 2021-014 authorizing an agreement between the Village of Montgomery, H&amp;K Property Development LLC, and Valmeray of Montgomery Townhome Association regarding certain road improvements and maintenance.
Yes.
Go ahead.
As you know, we had a bit of a stall out in Valmeray for a while. Many of the public improvements were put in, including a private drive that serves the townhome units for Valmeray, and that roadway and the lighting has kind of come into disrepair. So in order to encourage the development of these townhome lots, we've proposed to assist the HOA by including a one-time improvement to the private roadway, including both the roadway and streetlights with our IRP road program to bring it up to village standards. They have agreed to pay the village's improvement costs incurred by paying for the improvements at the time of building permit for each unit in the amount of $2,205.21. No costs for these improvements will be incurred by the village. We're just helping them out by including it as part of our project and getting it done at the same time that we're doing the rest of the road resurfacing out in that subdivision. We're going to get that incorporated in. I'm not sure exactly what the timeframe is on that, but probably in the next couple of years. I think we'll be going over that later today, later tonight, but we're anticipating this to come to about $106,000 when this will be paid for by the owner. As I say, we've been collecting the fees in good faith from them, getting this agreement before the village board, so we have been collecting the fees already for the past two buildings that have just recently been issued permits. There's going to be no additional cost to the village incurred.
Thank you. Any comments?
We've collected fees on two of the potential 53 permits?
Yes.
Okay, and what if the other 53 are never issued? Or 51?
So we've issued it for eight units because it's been for two buildings, so, and we will continue to collect those. I suppose if they don't finish, then we will keep the money and do it ourselves, or we will return the money, and it'll be on them to take care of the improvements.
Yeah, but we're doing improvements in the amount of $100,000. How much have we collected in fees?
We-
$16,000, right?
Somewhere around $16,000, yeah.
So if the development does not continue and stalls out, how do we claw back the remaining money that we have invested?
We don't have to, we just don't have to do the improvement.
We haven't spent the money yet.
Okay, so the improvement happens incrementally as the permits issue?
The improvement will not happen until we issue the IRP bids for doing the work and include it in that bid document.
But depending on when that is, what he's saying is we may not have collected all the money by the time it hits IRP.
Well, we wouldn't-
So there's a chance we're out the money. Now, I would think we're holding, I would think we're holding bonds or a letter of credit that we could dip into if we had to.
And is it the HOA that then would be required to make the village whole at that point?
Like an SSA?
We're expending dollars, we're agreeing to expend money that we may not recoup in the future if those permits are not issued and those townhomes are not built. In the event that that happens, five years from now that is not built out, do we get our money back from someone?
Laura?
Well, that's, you're doing it as part of this master resurfacing, so it looks like that's not scheduled to happen there until 2025, is that correct? So you've got the four years to see what develops and what doesn't develop.
There's just, there's a risk here that we are going to have money expended that we will not collect in the future.
Is this a public road or a private road?
It's a private road.
Got it.
Makes sense.
So we don't have to include it if we don't have not collected enough money to cover it during that?
I think when we get there, we'll have to look at it and-
And is that provision allowed, that then we could give back the money that was collected if we choose not to then improve that road?
We could add additional length, as of right now, the agreement does not include that language, but we could suggest adding it into them, and we would pass this then subject to, you know, their attorney with that caveat, and then they'd have to also agree to it.
It just seems like there's got to be A before B. We're just, we're agreeing to the whole without knowing what the future really is going to be there. It's just what I'm saying.
Yeah, is there an SSA that covers this road, though? Probably? There's no SSA for a private road?
So then who's responsible for the long-term, the HOA?
So we can't, there's no backup SSA if they would choose not to maintain their road? No, it would just go in disrepair.
If it just goes into disrepair, right.
I was just thinking if there's a backup that we can enact if we needed to.
The HOA is responsible for maintaining at the time if they choose not to.
Isn't there normally a backup SSA for a pub, for a private road that serves as an access point to like 50 townhomes?
I'm not, I'm not-
I guess you weren't-
I'm not aware of any in place. I would imagine that that'd be subject to approval by the HOA if they would elect to. I mean, that's language that we could definitely try to incorporate and see if they were agreeable to, but I'm not aware of any that we have currently in place where we have a backup SSA for private roads. Now, mind you, we don't have many within the village either, so we're pretty limited on those, but something that we can look into and definitely get back to you on.
Yeah, so unless there's objection or more questions, we don't need to act on this tonight, I would guess? And we can just vote on it in two weeks? You guys can, because it is an agreement, right? So there would be more negotiation with the other party.
Yeah, I mean, subject to attorney review, we can just bring it back to you.
Just so we have an out, so we're not kicking out the money, we have no way to get it back.
That's, that's, it's just a, is there a way that we can protect the village?
And I think they would hope that they would be understanding of that, considering that we don't have to do any of this stuff anyway? You know, we're really trying to help them out to get them good quantities, good pricing, and we would, they would get all the money they ever paid back, so.
Just an FYI, I won't be at the meeting in two weeks, but as long as that verbiage is in there, I have no problem if people vote on it and move on it.
How many private roads like this do we have in town? Because I know we've got the road that goes between Douglas and Village Center Parkway there by Wendy's, but that has no houses on it, and I know there's one that goes by Grandview Place, but I mean, this is actually a road that goes from a village road around and reconnects with the village road with houses on it, with residents. I've never liked this scenario of where we have a private road like this within the village, and that goes back from the experience when I built on my subdivision and knowing the developer had control over snow plowing, and we never got plowed until the snowstorm quit, whether if it was an hour or two days. It just never happened. So it's not, it's not a good situation for the residents to have a private road like this.
Well, they own and maintain it as their association, so-
Well, I get that, but still, they're still residents, and they still, they still need emergency services, they still need to go. We went through this with the developer, and the developer basically said, you know, there are roads, the village hasn't accepted them, we'll plow them when we want to, and the HOA can do the same thing. The village did talk to the developer and told them, you know, you're going to have to maintain these roads so that the residents can, can get out and so the emergency services could get in, and the developer did agree to do that and do a better job of it. But I'm just saying if, if, I just don't like, and this is a long road, roads like this not being under the control of the village, because, yeah, if they, if they do nothing to maintain the road, you know, yeah, where's our hammer? What are we going to do? I would just assume not have that situation. I know like Lakeside Drive, that's not a private road. I know the parking areas in there are, we thought were private, and then we found out that they're ours. How about Lexington? We plow that Lexington Drive on the other side, so I don't know of any, any roadway in the village that has houses that's a private drive, and I've just never, never liked that. I don't have a, I don't have an issue with helping resurface it so that it's, and fix the lights for the residents out there, but I just don't like the private drive scenario on such a large road with that many residents, that we don't have control over the maintenance of that road.
Yes, and I'd be happy to debate the policy on that, that the next time a development comes in that wants to do a private or public road. I've done it both ways, and I totally understand your, your point of view there. I should say, I think we've had commercial properties come in before and ask for our assistance in doing something like this, and we've shot them down. Very comfortable in this setting for residential HOA, you know, a group of homeowners as opposed to a commercial entity, so just so we don't- Okay, anything else? We'll see this at a future meeting? Thank you. All right. Items for discussion this evening, the only item is a pavement management study report update for 2021. This is part of, sorry, you can come on up. This is part of our master plan here to talk about pavement, water, or fences at every village board meeting, so tune in and enjoy. How you doing, sir?
Good, how are you?
Great.
So while Chris is getting set up, I'll just mention that this is an annual update that we do for the pavement management system. We, this is, it's a five-year plan. This would be after one year of the plan had been approved last year, so this is the first update that we'll be going through, and so that's the purpose of it, will give some background. And then what we do after the conclusion of a year's product, project, we evaluate, you know, how we did in the project in terms of expenditures and look at our revenue stream, and then use that information to build the next year's program. And our general philosophy has been to never, to always do the projects that are on the approved five-year plan, and that the changes that we make are to add additional streets, and that's what we've done for this update as well. And for those of you that don't know, Chris Odd, he's a, is the architect of the, or I should say the engineer of our pavement management program here in Montgomery and has been doing it for quite some time, so he coordinates it, he makes sure that we get our, our good bids every year.
All right, let's get started then. So we're here to talk about pavement management program update. I'm sorry. So just a quick agenda will be to, we're going to talk about a recap of the 2020 pavement management report, go over the paving history and improvements that the village has done since the IRP was initiated, talk about the updated five-year plan, what the next steps are, and then allow for any questions.
You should be able to minimize the zoom if you push that minus.
There you go. Is that better?
Yeah.
Sorry. So just to recap the 2020 pavement management report, so what is the goal of the pavement management? Goal is to assign a rating to each roadway and inventory each street in the village to have a score for each road so you can rank them against each other. We also develop maintenance strategies and costs for a variety of different maintenance rehabilitation options, as well as a majority of the streets in the village, review the budget needs and impacts, and then apply the budget and develop a five-year plan. So kind of just the basics of the pavement management program is to just provide a decision-making process that helps the village make cost-effective decisions considering the maintenance and rehabilitation of their pavement. So it helps you cost-effectively choose which streets to do. You don't always want to do the worst first, and one thing that we, we do is group the streets together, which has allowed the village to get really good unit prices to reduce the mobilization costs, so it's something else that we do with the pavement management program. So kind of the backbone of the pavement management program is the pavement deterioration curve, so this is kind of just an example deterioration curve. The key thing to note here is just that it's not a linear relationship, it doesn't deteriorate the same over the course of time. So you can see there's a little bit of flat section at the beginning, then it'll kind of deteriorate in the middle section here, and then flatten off towards the end. And what you want to try and do is resurface your streets, you know, before it gets down to the very end here and on this flatter section where you get, you're able to do more cost-effective improvements. Just to recap, the IRP from 2016 to 2020, so the village averaged an annual expenditure of $2,985 million on resurfacing and preventative maintenance. The expenditure was more than the report originally recommended in 2015 due to an increase of sales tax revenue the village received. So this resulted in the village resurfacing 35.4 miles, or about seven, a little over seven miles per year, which meant that about 47.6% of the village's streets got resurfaced, and we resurfaced every street in the original five-year plan except Concord Drive, and then we were able to do an additional 16.3 miles of streets due to the increased revenue that we saw. Additional project that got completed was we did the porous hot mix asphalt and the downtown alleys to not only resurface the alleys, but also help with some of the drainage concerns in the downtown alleys. And then the reason that the Concord Drive project did not get completed was we submitted for federal funds, did not receive it between 2016 and 2020, and we submitted again in the 2020 KCOM call for projects and got put on the waitlist, and will submit again in the January call for projects. And then just to highlight, the village spent an average of $121,000 per year on preventative maintenance. So that preventative maintenance is village-wide patching, village-wide crack sealing, and also in the last couple of years, we've been doing asphalt rejuvenation. So how does the rank get determined? So there's a road, we hire an outside consultant, in this case, we chose IMS, who did the original study for the village in 2014. They use two different pieces of equipment. The first one in the upper left is the road surface tester, so that's what tests the surface of the pavement. It's got a laser profile that measures the running, picks up all the cracks, and also measures the roughness of the road to come up with a surface distress index or a surface score. And then there's a subsurface tester, which is shown on the bottom left, and that, what that does is it, it puts a weight on the pavement, and then there's six geophones that pick up how much the pavement's deflected, and based on that information can tell you how good the, the base and the subgrade of the road below it is. And all three of those scores get combined to produce an overall pavement condition index or PCI, and the ranks go from zero to 100, and then you can see the qualitative ranks there, excellent, very good, good, fair, poor, and very poor. So here's some examples of what excellent versus very poor streets look like. So Trune Drive, excellent street, got recently resurfaced. Riverbend Drive, very good, was resurfaced in 2014, I think, a little bit of cracking in the center line. River Street, good, some cracking in the center line, starting to see transverse cracks and some cracking along the wheel path. Shetland Lane, in fair condition, you see a little bit more cracking in the center line, cracking on the edge as well as the transverse cracks. Baseline Road, poor, you see a lot of block cracking, cracking along the center line, and starting to see some of the pavement open up quite, quite big. And then Nell Road would be very poor. We've got a lot of coal patch, a lot of pavement deterioration, potholes that have been filled throughout the years. So with all that data, you, we combined it all to determine what's the overall rank of all those streets in the village. So the village has 75, a little over 75 miles of road that they maintain. There's still a little under a mile of roadways that are not accepted, that are binder only, and that's found out, out in Marquee Point. The current overall rating of the village's system was an 81, and the village had 81% of the roads in good or better condition and 19% in fair or worse condition. So I would say that's pretty good, and it's a, you'll see on the next slide, it's a really big improvement from where the village was in 2015. So you can see the, the impact that the IRP fund has had in increasing the overall condition of the village's streets. So back in 2015, is in blue, so you can see that there's a lot of the village's system that was in the good and fair category with a pretty high amount in the poor as well. And you can see as of 2020, there's a lot in the excellent and very good due to the increased resurfacing we did, and it's decreased the amount of streets mileage-wise in the fair and poor range. So next, just to recap the paving history and the improvements that we've done. So here's a map that shows the paving history of all the IRP roads from 2016 to 2021, including the streets we resurfaced this year. So you can see kind of how we've grouped the streets together and all the streets that have been resurfaced. And I think this really tells a lot about the progress that's been able to be made in the paving history. So from 2004 to 2015, the village averaged around a mile and a half of resurfacing a year, maybe a little bit less. And you can see the, the impact that the IRP fund has had from 2016 to 2021, and how much the village has been able to get done. The reason why there's a little bit of an ebb and flow in the years is because we alternate using MFT funds every other year. So some years, we have more funds available than the years before that. Just kind of going over what we typically do. So general, generally, we do just standard resurfacing, mill and overlay with patching. The depth that we use does change based on the cores that we receive, as well as the type of traffic that may or may not be on that road. You know, the cost range, depending on how much asphalt you put back on and how much you mill out, as well as how much curb and gutter get fixed, any driveway approaches that get damaged, sidewalk repairs and ADA requirements. So we don't just fix the, just resurface the roads, but we fix the curb and gutter to fix any drainage concerns, and then update all the ADA ramps to the most current ADA standards, and then any deteriorated sidewalk gets updated as well. So just some of the considerations, as I just spoke about, is, you know, in the top, top slide there, you can see there's a long stretch of curb that got taken out and repaired here to fix a drainage issue. There's patching repairs that get done here in the bottom right, where you're taking out the remaining asphalt, maybe going into the base a little bit to, to patch any deteriorated base or deteriorated asphalt that's left after milling. And then in the bottom left here, you can see where we're doing an ADA ramp update, where we're updating it to the newest ADA standards. Preventative maintenance, it's something that the village has been really aggressive with, and we'll kind of, I'm going to have a slide here that shows some of the advantages of doing the preventative maintenance. It's a little bit of money upfront, but it's, just think of it like you're investing and you're, you know, you're trying to keep your investment that you've made in, in good condition. So the asphalt rejuvenator, it's an application of a thin layer of asphalt emulsion, typically applied one to two years after resurfacing. Takes about 15 to 45 minutes to cure, and then the traffic can drive on it, and it generally extends the pavement life anywhere from three to five years, and costs a little bit 90 cents to a dollar per square yard. So we've been in the habit of resurfacing all the streets that got paved, I'm sorry, doing the asphalt rejuvenation on the streets that got paved the previous year. So all the streets that got paved this year, we'll be doing the asphalt rejuvenation on next, on next year. And then-
You only do once, right?
You, you, there is some communities that do it twice. I, we haven't had any experience doing that. It's a potential that maybe, you know, we could try doing that on a street to see how it, how it behaves, but it's not something that we, our office has experience with. But I know there are communities that do do that.
Perfect. Okay.
Crack sealing, so you want to get the crack sealed up when they show up to prevent the water from penetrating into the base, which ultimately leads to the pavement failure. So crack sealing is typically done four to six years after resurfacing. It's typically 50 cents to 75 cents per square foot, or square yard of roadway. So we're kind of getting into a, a cycle here where we're going to start crack sealing in the streets that we resurfaced. So I think this year's program is to resurface the streets that were done in 2015 and 2016. So you'll start to see crack seal on some of those streets that have been recently resurfaced. So kind of just why use the preventative maintenance? So what I've shown here is a prevented, or a typical street maintenance lifecycle. So there's the original pavement that gets put in, and then it lasts, you know, hopefully 20 to 25 years, then you resurface it, and then you resurface it again. And eventually you get to a point where, you know, you can't, can't resurface indefinitely, and you get to a point where you got to do reconstruction. The thing to note here is, as you resurface, the cycle between the resurfacing gets shorter typically. Your start value doesn't go all the way back up to 100 because there's some accumulated base deterioration. And eventually you get to the point where you either do reconstruction, or you mill the road down all the way to the stone and proof roll it and do base repair, which obviously is a lot more costly than just being able to do the resurfacing. So what we've been able to do with the preventative maintenance is, and, you know, it's a, it's a combination of things. One, doing the patching and the curb work that we do improves the base and raises the overall condition, which allow, you know, keeps the water off the street, gets it into the storm sewer, which helps extend the life of the base. The asphalt rejuvenator rejuvenates the asphalt and improves the flexibility of the roadway and extends the life of the pavement. And then the crack sealing prevents the moisture from reaching the base and protects the newly patched base. So what is shown here is this is your original deterioration curve. This is what your new curve looks like after doing the asphalt rejuvenator. And then finally, the third curve is kind of what it looks like with the crack seal. So what you can see is you're extending this life in the higher score longer, and then extending the life of the pavement. So hopefully, you can get more life between your resurface. And what the result of that is, is, so the blue shown is what the original pavement looks like, and the white is what was, was shown on the previous slide. So what you can see is that your resurfacings are going out longer, which is giving you more life, and it's delaying that reconstruction to later on in the pavement's life, and increasing the overall condition of the, the village's streets. Estimated lifecycle cost is 20 to 25% savings to push that reconstruction back another one or two resurfacing cycles. So now getting into the updated five-year plan. So year one of the plan was done this year. That was Foxmore, the rest of Foxmore subdivision, Saratoga Springs, and section of Montgomery Crossing, and then the remaining streets downtown, other than the rest of River Street that weren't done in 2016. So 2022 is going to focus out towards the police department, as well as take care of two of the village's worst-conditioned streets in Nell Road and Ashland Avenue. So you can see there, we're doing Nell Road and Ashland Avenue, the police department parking lot, and the streets surrounding the police department, the streets off Griffin Road here, and then these streets off Trune. Then 2023 would be Concord Drive for the Laffo Semitale, or the Semitale to the KCOM, and then streets on the east side of town. 2024 would bring it back towards the middle of town, and then, and River Street. And then, as discussed earlier, 2025 would be out towards Gordon Road, and then the streets in Belmaray. And then this is just an updated summary of the total cost and the improvements. One thing to note, that's the big change between this and what was originally approved, is we're, we're moving the use of the rebuild Illinois bond funds. So originally, we were planning on doing the rebuild Illinois bond funds for the Nell Road project, and putting funds towards the Dixon Road realignment. Because the original stipulation with using those funds were, were to use it on a bigger, new pavement, more of a reconstruction-type project. But villages lobbied to the state to loosen the requirements for those funds. And now, kind of just doing our traditional resurfacing that we typically do allows us to use those funds, and that will allow us to not have to go through so much of the IDOT paperwork and timeframe and everything on some of those other projects. We have to submit to IDOT in these years anyways because we're using MFT funds. So we thought it made sense to just lump those rebuild funds with a typical MFT year, and allow us to free up and just use village funds on those other projects, which would allow us to get those projects done quicker and with less, less IDOT overview. And we don't have to necessarily design to the IDOT local road standards as well. And then, so this is just a table form. I think everyone has this in their packet, so I'll breeze through this. Everything stayed the same. The yellow streets are the streets that were added. So just due to some cost refinement and everything, these streets got added. The one other thing to note is when we were putting together the 2020 plan, we were assuming some revenue loss due to COVID and everything. And I think in talking to staff, the revenue loss that was experienced wasn't as much as we had originally planned. So this plan reflects having those additional funds available.
I didn't, sorry, I didn't want to cut you off, but you were right there. The Stewart Sports Complex?
Yeah.
So the roads that we're resurfacing there are the public, village-owned portion?
Correct.
So anything beyond that is not going to be touched?
Correct.
As you go onto their site?
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing that we might work with the Fox Valley Park District on is, I don't know what the, it's called Access Road on this. I don't know what the actual name is, but it goes to the well, and then it goes up to that bubble where they have the new softball fields.
Oh, yeah.
We might work with them to see if they want us to fix the whole thing while they're there, because our portion doesn't go into that cul-de-sac bubble. But it's also not that old either, so.
Yeah. Is that Schmidt Drive, or it goes?
Schmidt Drive.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, sorry.
So there's no streets added in 2023. The streets that got added in 2024 were just streets over off Baseline. The rest of Baseline Road, the connector there, Horseman Trail, and then Caterpillar Drive. And then nothing added in 2025. So kind of just the next steps would be, so today was the report update. Hopefully, we're trying to get board approval of what we want to do for next year. Really, that's the key, is next year, and then we'll bring another update for the following years if anything changes or anything needs to be updated. And then the goal would be to have design engineering PSA for village board approval at the next board meeting. And that will help us get started so we can finalize design and open bids in February, which has typically been really good bidding time. The village has always gotten really good competitive prices, and then start construction April, May of 2022. So any questions or comments? I'd be happy to answer anything.
Thanks, Chris.
I have one. Nell Road?
Yes.
So it's up this upcoming year, correct?
Yes.
Is, and you guys all know a lot more than I do, but is that prudent to do that road right prior to the construction of the new Public Works building, with all the construction traffic onto our brand-new roadway?
We're, we're doing the other section from Orchard to the Dead End. The, the section in front of Public Works got done in 2016 already.
Okay. Thank you.
He's just testing you, Chris.
My map was upside down.
Could you clarify the, the initial rejuvenation piece that's done a year after? If, this past summer, I believe, if I'm thinking of the right process, that was done on Lakewood Creek Drive, is that just, it's a layer of oil with some crushed gravel?
Yeah.
That's on top?
Yes.
Now, there's a certain road that I would travel downstate, more rural road, two-lane, blacktop, where it seemed like they did that process almost annually, or at least almost by, twice maybe every other year on that process. Is there a difference between what a rural county would do with that process to extend the, the lifetime of a road versus doing it just once after the initial construction?
Without seeing the road, I, I'm not 100% sure, but my guess would be maybe they were doing like a chip seal type improvement, where you, you're, it's a little bit of a different process. You're putting oil down and gravel at the same time, and rolling it to get a new surface. The, this asphalt rejuvenation just gets put on the surface, it gets soaked up by the, by the road, and then what it does is it improves the, in, increases the asphalt content in the road to make it more flexible. So it's a little bit of a different process.
To a complete process, different process.
Yes. The asphalt or the grindings that they put on, in this case, in the, the village is only for traction. They sweep them up, I think, a day or two later. It's just, the road gets slick while the stuff bleeds into the asphalt, so they put the limestone screamin's just for traction, for people stopping and starting.
Okay. The, the process you're talking about, I graduated from high school in Iowa, and they did that process throughout most of the state. That's, that's what a lot of their roads were.
Remember, they tried that on Orchard Road like three years ago. It was kind of a mess, but it's a rural thing, right? All right. Write that down.
Did an excellent job this year, especially with downtown.
Thank you.
It really looks nice, and I drove through one day, and it looked like a bomb went off, and a week later, I'm coming through, and it was almost done. But it was really impressive of the, the work that they did, and the speed, and, and the new crosswalks looked amazing, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
And place of the payers.
Yes. Question, I know that you, you have the MFT, or the, the sales tax figures that go into here, but that's not all the sales tax figures that we get, right? Because didn't we, we kind of have some other buckets that we're filling?
Correct. So there's sales tax money that goes into the gap plan and doing the, some of the pedestrian improvements that the village has done. They also go into maintaining the pass, so sealing the pass and maintaining those, and then also setting aside money for some of the bigger projects that are coming up, like the Dixon Road realignment and other projects that we've identified.
Perfect. All right. Anything else?
You were unfinished?
No.
We still have Chris.
Yeah, Chris is still here. All right, Chris, thank you.
There is something that came up in the chat. I don't know what it is, but.
It's been there.
Yeah, it's good. All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
How do I stop sharing?
I have a couple lighters.
It's the red box. Right next to the right green.
There's nobody on the Zoom, so it, you know, doesn't matter, but, go ahead, Steve.
As I mentioned earlier, I'm not going to be at next, the next village board meeting. Second, do we have any sort of update on the stop sign and crosswalk issues over at Lakewood Creek and Concord?
Yes. So Mark and I met at the Concord and Lakewood subdivision, or location. We did a stop sign evaluation. We believe that a three-way stop is warranted, so we are recommending that to be installed. We also looked at some other locations in the, in the village, too.
Okay. Thank you. If I could go back and, kind of for Chris and Pete, Matt had touched on when we put the, the asphalt down over on Lakewood Creek. It was early this year, right, or last year?
Spring, it seems.
When we put down the striping for like the intersections and those sorts of things, the stop bars and that, does the asphalt that we put down a year later, does it deteriorate that or make them last less? No? You're saying no?
Not typically. Through our program, we use thermal plaster now for all of our striping. The, there's an initial fade from the rejuvenator that's put down, but typically that, that wears through. The reflectivity is still transparent through that, so we're still in compliance as far as that goes with the thermal plaster.
Can we just spray right over it, basically?
Correct.
Thank you.
They're going to be much harder than that. Steve, you let me down. Doug, go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Wolf and Mr. Wallers for following up on the timing of the light at Galena and Concord. After the closing of Bayfield, they checked and followed through on that to make sure that, that timing was adjusted, that, that timing had been adjusted. There was one incident that came up where there was a big backup on graphic. It was an anomaly. So it, but they did follow through and make sure that that was on point. So thank you for that. Then we also have the Halloween Safety Event coming up on Sunday, October 10th, at the police department, which is always a great time. Commander Pelco is seeking volunteers, donations, anything anyone can offer. We'll be doing a touch-a-truck this year as part of that event. So- We'll be doing a touch of truck this year as part of that event, so that's coming up. And then also, just a reminder that we have until Friday to register and sign up to apply for the Citizens Police Academy as well. So, there's some openings left for that. Having gone through that, the, two years ago, it was a great program, very eye-opening to learn some of the inner workings of the police department and, and some of the background to why they do things the way they do them. So, I highly recommend that to anybody that's interested, but you have until the 17th. It's on the village website. You can click through and get the application. That's it? Oh, I apologize. Thank you. We did just, this past week on Thursday, had the MACG golf outing. Shar put together. I apologize for forgetting about that. Maybe it was because I golfed so poorly, but it was a great event. Dan, thank you for all your help. Steve, thank you for your help with, you know, being there and volunteering. We didn't win, unfortunately, but it was a great time, I think, 94 golfers?
Yes.
94 golfers, great raffle prizes. It was a good time had by all. So, thank you again, Shar, for putting that together.
Perfect weather.
It was a success. Yeah, I put Steve in charge of the weather, and he took care of it, so life is good. Thank you.
I bought a raffle ticket, and I won myself a Carl Buttek shirt and a bag of sausage, which I cut up and brought, I'll bring out after the meeting, and two hats, two shirts. I gave one to my wife, she was super excited. It was an extra-large, so. And anyway, it was a great event.
Yeah, it was, it was a great event, and I was wondering who put their ticket in that bucket.
Yeah.
It, it actually said on the sign, "Two shirts, two hats, and a lot of sausage."
True. You're going to help me eat that sausage, so. I did want to add, real quick, we do have the Water Open House on Wednesday night, September 15th, at Grand Reserve, from 5:00 to 7:00. This is a joint meeting that we're having with Oswego and Yorkville to discuss all of the options that we're currently exploring for the future of our water supply, a decision that will likely be the most important decision that this board, in my opinion, ever makes, which hopefully will be later this year. So, hopefully, we'll get a good turnout, and, and we'll be talking about it more in the next meetings. Anything else? All right. You can see future meetings. We do have the, the River Run on October 2nd, just so everybody's aware. Please sign up and run. Future meetings, committee, the whole meeting is to be canceled next week. We have the village board meeting on September 27th at 7:00 PM in this room. No executive session. Is there an entertain, entertaining motion to adjourn?
If I can say it.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Bussinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
And Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.